All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Hines?
Here.
Trustee Youngerman?
Here.
Trustee Marisack?
Here.
Trustee Vine?
Here.
And we're all here this evening? All right, move on. Public participation, public comment. This is the two minutes opportunity for any member of the public that's here this evening that would like to address the board on any topic that they choose. If you can head to the podium and sign in, we'll take those wishing to speak.
Hi, my name is Kim Walker, and I live at 2648 Jenna Circle in the Lakewood Creek subdivision. And some of you on the board may be aware or not aware, I'm here regarding the pit bull incident that happened on Saturday. And I wanted to come and talk because there's a backstory to this pit bull incident that occurred on Saturday that I want the board to be made aware of. I am the next-door neighbor of the pit bull at 2652 Jenna Circle. I can tell you for a fact that the pit bull is somewhere between three and five years old. I called ironically on Tuesday, last Tuesday, and spoke with Matt Fitzgerald, I believe is his last name. This pit bull has been loose before. He was loose last year, and I witnessed both attacks. He attacked a neighbor's dog about six houses down from me, and then about a week later, he attacked, I guess what you would call maybe a chow-chow, right at the end of my driveway. So this pit bull in question from Saturday has already attacked two dogs from last year. Now, I've been having trouble with him because our fence has dips in it, like a wave. He's getting to the point now where if myself or my four-year-old daughter is out in the backyard, he now sticks his head in the low part of the dip, and his head and his neck are coming over into my yard. Last year, when I was cutting my grass and weed whacking, if they let him out, and I have the weed whacker going up along that side of the fence, or if I'm backwards with my lawnmower and they let him out, I don't know it. Last year, he almost grabbed me in the shoulder. So I went over there last year, and I asked the owner, she's got teenagers living there. I don't bother with the teenagers. I go right to the owner. I had asked her last year if whenever they let him out, he stays on a tie-out. They have a tie-out in the backyard. They did it for about a week, and they've never done it since. What happens is, they have two gates on both sides of their house, like most people do. Two years ago, the gate was slamming in the middle of the night. I went out to shut the gate. There's no latch. I put a bungee cord around the gate two years ago, on the right side of the fence. That bungee cord is still there. The left side of the gate broke. There's a bungee cord over there. On their front door, the storm door, there's no handle whatsoever. There's just a hole where the handle would be. This dog, when he does escape, tends to escape either out of the bungee-corded gates, which they've never fixed the latches on, or right out the front door that literally and figuratively has no handle on it. It's just a hole. You can't lock it. You can't do anything. You've got to stick your finger in the hole, or grab part of the door to open it and close it. On Tuesday, I spoke with Matt Fitzgerald. I was out in my yard again on Tuesday. Once again, he's charging the fence. This is about a pit bull that's about yea tall. He's brown and white in color. I would guess he weighs about 90 pounds. Once again, he's charging me at the fence. These wooden fences, after a while, they get a little rickety. When he charges that fence at me, the whole fence is shaken. So I had enough, went over there and ding-donged the doorbell. I could hear the doorbell inside the house. The dog was barking. He could hear the doorbell. There were three cars in the driveway. Nobody came to the door. I waited again, rang the doorbell again. Once again, could hear the doorbell from in the house. The dog outside could hear the doorbell. Still didn't come. I had had it talking with my neighbor. I went in the house and I called Matt Fitzgerald last Tuesday. I've already called the police on this dog once because they let him out in the backyard at 10:00, 10:30 at night, barking, 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 barking. They shut the glass patio door, and they don't even bother with him. I'm over there yelling at the dog, and I know the dog's name. They don't even come out. On Halloween, a couple of months ago, he was loose. I called the police department and talked to dispatch. The family that owns the dog actually called the police because he got loose, and they wanted the police to go get him. This was on Halloween. The police did come, and I talked to the cop, and I said, hey, that pit bull's loose. You better be careful. He said, that's what I'm here for. On that particular day, I had a roofing company coming over to my home to patch something on my roof. Their name is Extreme Exteriors out in Plano. When the guy showed up, I'd been watching for them to come because he was running amok all over Jenna Circle. He actually went back to his home and sat at the front door numerous times. They had the front door shut. If they would've had the garage door open, he probably would've went in because he was a pit bull. And if anybody remembers, on Halloween, it was cold that day. The dog wanted to come back home. They don't care. This is a joke to these people. When the roofers came, he was running up and down. He actually started to come to the roofers. The roofing guy got out of the roofing truck with a crowbar in his hand. So I can't even have service people come to my home and service my home if this dog is loose. So I told this whole story to Matt Fitzgerald on Tuesday. He was going to check with the police reports and get back with me. Well, lo and behold, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, my neighbor at 2644 Jenna Circle made a 911 phone call because same dog again got loose on Saturday. We weren't home that day. He attacked the neighbor's dog at 2640 Jenna Circle, let that dog go, somehow made his way down Shawna, and I believe it was either on Caliendo or Kathleen, he actually did damage to a second dog. Whether that was in within five minutes, 10 minutes, I don't know. We weren't home. That lady, I can give you her name, posted the pictures on Facebook. Back a couple of months ago, this dog's picture is on our Facebook community neighborhood webpage because people are saying, we've got a pit bull running loose. Does anybody know whose dog this is? So I call on Tuesday, and I'm trying to get as many people to understand that this is a dangerous animal. The people that live in the house do not take it seriously. And I tried to work with my neighbor first. It's a joke. So I'm here to tell you today, this is a dangerous animal. This is going to end up being on the 10 o'clock news. This is going to turn into something deadly, whether he mauls a dog or mauls a kid. I have a four-pound puppy in that bag, and a four-year-old daughter's sitting right there. I'm the next-door neighbor. If he ever jumps the fence, what chance does she have, and what chance does a four-pound dog in that bag have? What chance? So I am done. I am done. I am finished. My recommendation, and I know there's rules and laws and regulations, and you can't do this and can't do that, we are beyond a, this is your first letter, this is your second letter, and at the third letter, we come and get the dog. As far as I'm concerned, and I hope there's anybody here today who witnessed what happened on Saturday, I can even give you neighbors' names. They want to come over to my house, I'll let you come over to my house, stand in my backyard, and watch what this dog does. But I'm telling you, the solution to this problem is to remove this dog. Because the owners think it's a joke. That house is run by teenagers and a single mom. And this happened last year, and it's happening again this year, and we're not even in the summer yet. You've got dogs that are going to be in heat, you've got people out walking their dogs, and the neighborhood in Lakewood Creek subdivision is full of kids. And even if you don't live in Lakewood Creek subdivision, if this dog gets loose, he's going to be in Orchard Prairie North, or he's going to cross Route 30 and be in Foxmore. So whether or not you live on Jenna Circle or in Lakewood Creek subdivision, when this dog gets out and his nose or his hormones take him whatever way he wants to go, it's going to be somebody's problem that maybe lives on Caliendo, that maybe lives on Lynn Court. And the sad thing's going to be, if he does get a hold of somebody's dog, and they don't know whose dog this is, how do you get repercussions made? How do you file something against the owner? Because this dog is like something out of the Kentucky Derby. He is gone. And the owners, when they were catching him on Saturday, my neighbor came up to me, they were trying to help. And they said to him, does your dog bite? And they're very belligerent. He said, well, has he bit you yet? Are you kidding me? So you need to know the backstory on this dog and what's been going on. So there was a huge incident on Saturday, but there's a backstory to this. And I am the next-door neighbor, and I can vouch for what I'm saying, and I can give you names and people to talk to, but this is ridiculous. This has got to stop. This dog needs to be removed. And I'm very concerned that if it's removed, they better understand, don't go get another one. Because they have, they don't train, they don't care, and I've been living next door to this. And I'm here to tell you, you've got a dangerous dog and a dangerous situation. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Kim. Appreciate it. That is certainly a very serious situation, and I know we have somebody else here to speak, but before that, I would like to have our attorney kind of comment on the process at this point, and then go forward with that.
Thank you. And thank you, by the way, for all of that clear and concise testimony. That's the sort of thing we need to hear to be able to investigate and prosecute it appropriately. My understanding from the police department is the ticket, which is the starting point for this process, has been issued. So that's a good thing. What happens now is, we are able to prosecute that in court. And in a prosecution, even though it sounds like a small thing with a ticket, it's not. We have the ability to either order removal or destruction of the dog, depending on the circumstances. Of course, that's not, we prosecute, the judge ultimately decides that. But we have done these in the past. And in the past, we've had both orders of destruction and removal. A lot of times, people will say, don't, please don't destroy my dog. I'll agree to have it, you know, shipped off to someplace else. And sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. However, we, I did not have your backstory until you just explained it in a very clear way. So I appreciate that. Based on that, what we'll do is, we'll meet with the police department, make sure that our prosecutors are fully aware of all the facts you just gave, and then we'll go forward with an aggressive prosecution to see what we can do to get that dog removed in one form or another from the residence.
Do you know the timeframe on all that? Or about months?
Not years. It's typically, I don't know when the ticket is returnable in court, but do you know, Chief, off the top of your head?
I do not. Most likely, it'd be the first week or two in May.
Okay. Typically, it would probably be, if the person wants to delay it, they could delay it maybe two months, three months, something like that. So we're talking into the summer is realistically to force an order. Now, if they're willing to agree, a lot of times, we can get agreement if we put forth the idea that we may be seeking an order of destruction. They may be willing to agree, which will short-circuit that and have the dog physically removed from the village, basically. So we'll see. But we will aggressively prosecute it.
Absolutely.
Through the police department.
Yeah. Absolutely.
I would say, too, that if something happens before that time, that she should call the police department, and that we should do something about it. Because there's nothing worse than parents not handling their kids or their dogs. And I think that's a case where, in a situation like this, we don't want this dog running loose and chasing this little girl here again. And there's nothing worse than a wild dog with no consequences. And you can't say, well, we'll talk about it two months from now when you get to court. I'd like to see something done at that time. If the dog does it again, and I would almost say, he'll do it before me first. I would think that's the case because the parents don't care. And I just don't want you sitting there thinking that you've got two months to worry about it. So if something else happens, I want you to call the police department right away.
This was something that I was made aware of either Friday or Saturday. And I had called Jeff this morning and asked him to check with code enforcement and also the police department, and update the board on what was going on. Because if there's a loose dog like that, especially with that, the pit bull type of dog, it only takes one time for something very serious to happen. So do you have anything to add, Jeff?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Kim, I just want to thank you and Matt for coming and bringing this to our attention, obviously very publicly, but very well stated, too. Well, we may need your help at some point in this process, but we will certainly prosecute to the fullest extent on this. It's a safety hazard for the area, so thank you.
I think there's two more people.
Yeah. And do we have somebody else? Come on down.
Did you bring answers? I don't think he is.
Thank you. My name is Bill Penley. I live in Boulder Hill, so I can't vote for any of you folks. But as you know, the Village of Montgomery supplies the water to us. January 30th was a Friday, had new neighbors move in across the street, and it was the first day they were able to get in the house. They're planning to sleep there that evening. They found out there's no water in the house. Now, for most of us, that's kind of a problem if it's overnight, but when you talk about the weekend coming up, it becomes a bigger problem. I gave them the information. They called the Village of Montgomery Water Department. I happen to be not far from this village hall, going by. At that point, it was about 11 o'clock, I'd say. It was about 12:30, I'm going by. I thought, well, I'll just stop in and say, hey, you know, anything you could do to help these good people, you know, I would appreciate it, just because I'm their neighbor. And I know they would. Long story short, there was one technician on duty. That's okay. But the lady said she was doing everything she could to help them. Lo and behold, by the end of the day, they had water service. I stopped to thank her for that later, after I'd found out about it, but not later that day. I think that was excellent service. The lady I talked to was Jenna from the billing department. I didn't even know her name. I had to stop here and ask her what her name was, the last water bill I paid. But I thought she did an excellent job, and I thought somebody besides me should be aware of that. That's the first reason I'm here. The second reason, I received one of these little notices. We're all familiar with them. We're going to turn off your water because there was a water problem in Boulder Hill. What a surprise. There's lots of water problems in Boulder Hill. The mains are always busting. So on Tuesday, March 17th, I received a notice, water's probably going to be off a maximum of eight hours, eight to four. The water was turned on about 3:30 in the afternoon. Not bad. I anticipated worse. Seneca Drive was a mess with trucks and water main breaks, but they got it done. The following morning, about 11 o'clock, there's a tap at the door. I get one of those little red cards handed to me. Fellow's working two doors over. He says, you have to turn off your water. I says, we just went through this yesterday. Kind of laughed. He said, we're going to turn it off, probably going to be off from 1:00 to 6:00. Water came back on between 2:30 and 2:40. Good service. Stan Bond over there, and I never met him until tonight, stopped, spoke my hand, introduced himself, asked me, did I want to speak? And I said, yes. And he says, what about? And I said, the water department. He said, good or bad? And I said, good. And with that, gentlemen and ladies, I'm going to wish you all a good night. Thank you very much for your time. Okay? I think somebody should be aware that the water department does a good job. That's why I came. Have a good night.
Thank you.
I almost want to clap after that. I'd say thank you, but he is in the parking lot already. But we'll certainly, Pat, make sure that Jenna is aware of that and staff is aware of that. And we don't get very many comments like that, as you guys probably know, so getting those at a meeting is certainly a plus. Thank you. Do we have anybody else that wishes to address the board this evening? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dave Dillo. I live on 2051 Kathleen Circle. The reason I'm here tonight is, my wife had got a message, probably from you, that somebody was going to talk about pit bulls. My dog was the second dog that got attacked Saturday. We ended up taking her to the ER hospital Saturday evening. I didn't know the backstory of the dog. He was running around the neighborhood. Everybody was out trying to catch it. I was inside, my 13-year-old daughter's outside playing basketball, and this dog comes up and attacks my dog, pins it on the ground, has four canine marks in her chest. If that would've been my kid, it's bad enough it's my dog. And I also have an 11-year-old. After hearing the backstory of other things that have gone on, I think something needs to be addressed as soon as possible. And it's not every pit bull in the world. It's how they're raised. It's just like your kids. There can be crazy kids, there can be normal kids, there can be relaxed kids. But if they're not putting forth any effort or anything to try to help the dog, then they shouldn't be having an aggressive dog. If you can't take care of it, you don't need it. Guess that's it. I really don't have much more to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the board in the public comment portion? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to the public hearing on the budget. Is there anybody that wishes to address the board specifically regarding the budget, FY16? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on that and move on to the Sunshine Award from the Illinois Policy Institute. And with that, I'll ask Jeff for his presentation.
Thank you. We recently received notice that we've received the Sunshine Award. And the Sunshine Award is presented to local governments that demonstrate outstanding transparency on their websites. So there's something Debbie and I had talked about, is one of her goals, is trying to make sure our website was up to date, had good information on it. So as part of that, she had them come do an initial audit. Initially, we scored about 40% out of 100. So to get the award, you have to get 80% or better on their checklist. So she got the list of things that we could work on. She worked on those, and when they came back out, we got a little over 84%. So very proud of the work she did on that and for the award, that, you know, we now have a good amount of information out there for our residents, for businesses, anybody who wants to go out there. She did put in there, if you want to know why we didn't score 100, there are still some things we need to work on. Some things like actual salaries and actual benefits for employees. We post budgeted numbers instead of actual numbers. And there are a couple areas where they want like five years of agenda packets. We currently have four years, and we're adding to the fifth year, so. But overall, it's just, I think, a very good thing for the village and very proud of the set of the work Debbie did, and just wanted you to know, so.
Awesome. So we will get to 100%?
That's right. Maybe 101.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we have the ME-DC report, so I'd ask Doc and Char to come down.
Good evening. I thank you all tonight for the opportunity to be in front of us. If you have a chance to. Am I on? There you go. To be in front of the audience tonight, to talk a little bit about the ME-DC. It's been a while since we've been here. I've had the fortunate opportunity this past year to have some in-depth conversations with several of you, and I appreciate the opportunity to have gone through those steps. We are very excited about the ongoing funding. We have a lot of things happen last year. We have a lot of things on our plate for this year. And we thought we would take the night to kind of come back in front of the board here and talk a little bit about some of those accomplishments, and also where the ME-DC is going. I'm in this last year as my chairmanship with the EDC, and I will be stepping down later on this year, but we do have a good set of people coming in. We have a bunch of solid individuals that are on this board, and I'm very happy how this last year has gone. We are doing some marketing things. I just put down in front of you a few minutes ago, a little pen marketing that we're going to be using when we go out to the convention here in Las Vegas in May. And Char, those are two very nice little marketing tool that we're going to be trying to leave with our people as we meet and talk with those. That being said, I would less like to turn over just a few minutes of presentation, and then we'll open up afterwards for any questions you may have, and we will hopefully answer those and move on. I'll turn over to Charlene, our executive director.
Thank you.
Will we see you again before you retire? All right.
Thank you, Detective Neal. I put together a few slides, about 15, and just wanted to summarize some of the things that the ME-DC has focused on. And also, I wanted to, just as a summary, we have, we do have a few new trustees, and over the last couple of years, one of the things that we spent a lot of time on, both the ME-DC board and the village trustees, they had a rating sheet where they talked about different things that were important. So I thought it was important to mention our purpose, what are the main things that we're looking to achieve, and then the end result, you know, what does that then accomplish for the village? Okay, did that skip? Okay. Sorry, technical difficulty. I think that was just a heavy finger. So here I have the purpose. Yeah, there's a slide missing here. That's okay. I don't know how that happened, but anyway, we'll work with it. Okay, so basically, our purpose is obviously to promote economic development. We work on expansions, and we also focus on the diversification within the village. We like to promote the businesses within the community. And I also had a slide that just talked about different things that the ME-DC does, including building relationships, marketing, public relations, and things that we work with builders and developers. That would include working on incentives. We'll work with the state, as well as go over the revolving loan fund, different things that we can do to help add to any, anything that perhaps a business might need. On building relationships, here I just put a handful. Working with Kane and Kendall County, just a few weeks ago, I set up a meeting with the workforce group that had a private meeting, also with Wabonzi College and Butterball. In addition to that, we'll work with realtors and developers one-on-one, and also bring them into the community, obviously the state and the regional economic development groups, too, to have an understanding of what it is that they do and how we compare to them. Working with land and business owners, we maintain inventory, both through the LOIS site as well as the ISIC site, which give you two venues to look at property. And then I mentioned the college, and then working with staff, administration, and the elected officials. Some of the highlights from last year, here I basically just added some of the new things that were added last year. We coordinated a plaque presentation with village staff and also the Chamber of Commerce and the ME-DC to let the business know we appreciate their worth, we appreciate their investment, and it's kind of a nice touch. We work with staff on coordinating different meetings. Some are retention visits, or how you doing visits, have you met this one visit, whatever it would take as part of, you know, a way to just keep communication going. We're currently working with Rich on the Douglas Road Task Force, and we coordinated our first industrial building and land tour last year. The results of that, almost all of those buildings have been completely filled or have brought in leads anywhere from three to five new companies that we hadn't had before. And although some of them might not have necessarily had an actual walkthrough, as I followed up and talked to some of those brokers, found out that some buildings generated the leads that then ended up in a closed deal. So that's important to know. Some of the highlights from last year, here I basically just added some of the new things that were added last year. We coordinated a plaque presentation with Village Staff and also the Chamber of Commerce and the ME-DC to let the business know we appreciate their worth, we appreciate their investment, and it's kind of a nice touch. We work with staff on coordinating different meetings. Some are retention visits or how you doing visits, have you met this one visit, whatever it would take as part of, you know, a way to just keep communication going. We're currently working with Rich on the Douglas Road Task Force, and we coordinated our first industrial building and land tour last year. The results of that, almost all of those buildings have been completely filled or have brought in leads anywhere from three to five new companies that we hadn't had before. And although some of them might not have necessarily had an actual walkthrough, as I followed up and talked to some of those brokers, found out that some buildings generated the leads that then ended up in a closed deal. So that's important to know. We did our first cleanup. That was a very successful event, I thought. I remember hearing somebody say it was kind of a challenge, but I think what was really kind of exciting about that particular event was the businesses also participated, got to work with the elected officials, and we went all the way from Orchard Road back to the ME-DC office. And Public Works was awesome, the police department helped. It was, you know, a collaborated effort. It didn't cost any money, and it sure was nice a few days prior to our industrial tour. The business climate meetings we have, we have those monthly, and the two highlighted ones that I highlighted here was the ComEd meeting and then also the Upper Illinois, which was IRVDA, that came and talked about bonds. The ComEd was standing room only. They went everywhere from business issues to lighting, to green energy, to getting rid of old refrigerators, to helping a neighbor. I mean, it was quite a positive thing. In fact, just last week, I had a call from one of the businesses asking for contacts because a tenant had moved out of their building and they needed to contact somebody from ComEd because something with a deposit or, I can't remember what it was exactly, but the point is letting our businesses know that we're there to help them and to do what we can, and then also to reach out to people that could possibly help them, whatever their needs may be. Here I highlighted some fun, I like pictures. I brought in, well, I just kind of highlighted the ones that were most current, the plaque presentation. We not only work on the events with the staff and the other agencies, we also work to make the event successful through marketing, Facebook and social media. The Halloween massacre, that building is now a hundred percent occupied. It's the first time it's been a hundred percent occupied, probably in six or seven years. This is just some photo shots with the Ocot Road cleanup. We had a beautiful day. This is Baseline Road, 2001. It was an open house that was done with Lee and Associates and Stag Industrial. Now, Stag, a few years back, purchased that building. I was, I worked with Caterpillar and also IDI to get that building closed. Half that building then got vacated. Cat Logistics did, they had a third-party logistics firm, so we have 249,000 square feet available in that building. I recently brought a few people through it, and they were looking to put, you know, 120 was the smallest that they would go, but in the last few weeks, we might have an end user that'll take the 249. So that could be good. What's important is that we maintain relationships and spend time with these people so they know that we're here for them again. There's also seven acres outside of that building that IDI owns. So when my smaller user wasn't accepted to go into this particular building, I'm trying to see if they would consider maybe having a building built. And there's seven acres, he drew me a few plans, and that could be exciting. That's actually a fun project I've been working on since October, and hopefully we can get him to come to Montgomery. These are a few shots from our first industrial park tour. We started with a breakfast, and what I really wanted to focus on here was, again, the relationships and what ended up happening as the end result of bringing those parcels, having a list, having a map, and getting it on a list in front of people who might have prospects looking. I do believe that Michaels was a result of this because when I developed a relationship with the broker on that property, and that deal has already closed, and is something that we could look forward to this year. I think there's going to be about sixty-eight jobs in the office, and they also purchased the seven acres. So again, being proactive and pro-business, everybody really impressed that group when they took six hours to get here from Wisconsin. So again, industrial park tours or property tours. In this year, we're going to do a retail tour again, and this is just a spread of different marketing and advertising that the ME-DC does. There's different, I kind of try to spread things out. I also negotiate with the press and the magazine people. We were very fortunate in the Business Expansion Journal. Not only did we place that ad, we ended up getting a really nice article about the food industry, which I believe is a great mix for Montgomery. You know, everybody has to eat, and in fact, the 249,000 is a food, end up being a food user. So again, getting your name out there and diversifying your mix, letting different people know that we're out there, is really important. We've been very consistent. I also managed to get two and $3,000 ads for a couple hundred dollars. Last week, I negotiated a banner ad for 12 months for $300. I was pretty good there. You just never know, you know, and that's important. This again is what we have to look forward to in 2015. Now inland, I talked to David just a week or two ago, and one of the tenants that's waiting for one of the buildings to go up, I keep hearing one building, two buildings, because my tenant just recently told me that now he might end up doing two. I don't know if that's true, but we do have a few people that are calling and waiting to see if they can get in there. So that's good news. Niners Grill, everybody worked really hard on that. As you know, that was partially, we had a lot of assistance from local, from Randy, the broker, who really worked hard on helping save that deal several times. Rich and I had tons of meetings over and over again. I did put Mr. Silva up there because I had been working with him since I started. He kind of had, took a while to pull the trigger, but today he was really happy to send me some pictures, not only of some of the outside, but some of the inside. And he's still deciding on colors, and so I know Jeff said put the building up there, but he's got such a nice smile, and he's such a nice guy, and I'm, I guess one of the things too that I think that's important is, I'm not the only cheerleader for Montgomery, you all are too. And Mr. Silva, when my client from Lockport came and ate breakfast and talked to Mr. Silva, and was having breakfast there on a regular basis, he went on and on and on about just pulling the trigger and how long it took him. So I think it's important that we let our businesses know that we appreciate them, and we let them also cheerlead for us. Here I just summarized some of the big-ticket items. You know, a lot of these deals take a long time. You know, Baseline went from an investment with Stag on to the 249,000, and again, there's acres around it. Montgomery Business Park is one that we've all been, we've been working on, I've been working on, I think, since October. I'm really, really proud of all the work that everybody's done to help me do my job because without your help and staff's help, we wouldn't be able to close the deals. I could bring hundreds and hundreds of deals into the community, but without your help, I can't close them. And almost, I believe almost everyone on there has closed and gotten through a series of obstacles that we overcame. Testimonials, I think, are really important. The last ad that I did had several testimonies, testimonials from business owners who say we're the best of the best. We need to continue to be that way and let people, because good things travel, and I don't know, I'm just excited and passionate about what it is that we do. So I mentioned ICSC, obviously, you know, Douglas Road, there's some work to be done. I know that somehow I missed another sign, but that's okay, you probably had enough slides. They're all printed, so you all have a copy, and we're here to answer any questions. If there's anything specific, tell me what I can.
Thank you, Shar, I appreciate it.
Sure.
The one thing that I wanted to just expand on a little bit is about thirteen or fourteen months ago, at the ME-DC Board meeting, we had talked about retention visits for the next 12 months, and really, we made a list of probably some of our bigger employers in town and divvied those up, a three-pronged approach with Shar, Rich, and I, and figured out who would go to each one and that. And I sat in on three of those. Last year, we went out and met with, I think it's three, but United Facilities, Fox River Foods, and Roar Bearing are the ones that Rich and I did specifically. So the, what comes out of those, I know you guys also did a bunch, what comes out of those is really kind of intangible, but in one of those meetings that we had, the manager, the owner said, well, I have this friend who does this X, Y, and Z development that maybe I should mention this site to him, or the TIF, or whatever it is. You don't know what's going to come out of those, or another firm was looking to hire in a specific area, and we put them in touch with Wabonzi. So you never know exactly the impact that you're going to make with those, but certainly all three of them, I know for sure, appreciated the trip and the visit from us. So I just wanted to expand on that. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
You've mentioned, it's a, you did the industrial map walkthrough,
Sure.
which was a fantastic idea. I think that was really well done. And is it, it sounds like you're doing the same thing with retail?
Correct.
Thank you. We could use the help there. Thank you.
We're going to have a bus.
I know somebody that has a line on a trolley.
Oh.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shar. Thanks, Doc. All right, with that, move on to the consent agenda. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. We have the minutes of the Village Board meeting of February 23rd, minutes of the Village Board meeting of March 9th, accounts payable through March 18th. Ordinance 1662, now that's amending the Village ordinance regarding maximum building height in manufacturing districts. This is the waiver of the first reading and passage on the second. And then we also have ordinance 1663, which is approval of the final plat for the Montgomery Business Center Unit One. This is also waiver of first reading and passage on the second.
So move.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
That's right.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Trustee Youngren?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
And that carries 6-0, thank you. All right, move on to items for separate action. We have ordinance 1664, adopting the annual operating and capital improvement budgets for fiscal year 2015, 2016, FY16.
FY16.
And this is the first reading, we won't be taking any action on that tonight. Do you have anything, or should?
Justin does have.
That, I'll ask Director Van Voren for an update.
Thank you, President Brawley. In front of the board tonight, as President Brawley just stated, is the first reading of the fiscal year '16 budget. We have made a few changes to the budget since the meeting last week, and then after hearing some of the comments last week, we also made some additional changes to what's in the packet, so. The first item that we changed was, we adjusted the salaries based on the discussion at the meeting last week. The second change, pardon me, the second change that we made was an adjustment of the, for the buildings that were included last time for Public Works, we took those buildings out, and we have actually, at this point, put the transfer, put a transfer into the capital improvement fund to go into the general fund of that $160,000. So we've taken the building out, the buildings out, and taken the money that was going to be spent on those and transferred, shown a transfer to the general fund. Other than that, those are the major changes to the budget. If there's any questions, we can certainly answer those.
With those two changes, the general fund's now showing about $180,000 surplus, about $20,000 from the, putting in the 1% salary cap that you discussed last time, and 160 from the CIP. Additionally, Mike's prepared to talk about vehicles, because I was at a discussion last time, and he's brought Allen with him, also to try and answer some of the questions you had last time regarding that.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, President Brawley. Alan Duncan, our fleet mechanic, is here with us tonight. Some of the questions that had come up at previous meeting focused on just getting a summary of the current vehicle requests. We talked about used cars versus new, so we want to discuss that a little more tonight. And I think we were going to talk a little bit about the current community development vehicles as well. So, at your place tonight was a handout. It's a variety of sheets. The first few are going to be a summary, we're going to go through a summary of the vehicle requests, then we're going to talk about some, just some new vehicle cost information. We want to make sure the board has a solid understanding of what we pay for vehicles and some of the pricing benefits that we get. We're going to talk a little bit about the value we're getting on trading in vehicles that had come up as to how do we dispose the vehicles, do we trade in, do we do eBay, et cetera? And I said we've been using trade-in quite a bit, so we wanted to highlight some of what we think the benefits of that are. And then we'll get on, we thought it'd be a good idea, we hadn't really looked at the used vehicle idea, so we wanted to do some price comparison on that, and so we've included a few examples. Now, obviously, there's millions of used vehicles, but we think these are pretty representative. So with that, I'm going to ask Allen to kind of go through these sheets, and at any time, please feel free to ask questions, and if there's anything else you'd like us to add, we'll be happy to do it. So, Allen, you ready?
Kind of nervous, so. Page one, this is Unit 241 and 250. 241 is a plow truck, strictly just a plow truck. In the past year, we've spent almost $10,900 on repairs. It is a 2004. Lifetime repairs, including fuel, would be $47,882. It's getting old, engine's using oil, engine's getting tired and wore out, heavy corrosion on the transmission case, which is very expensive, it's magnesium. Needs to have the worn-out plow hitch replaced. Estimated from Benel, six to seven, $7,500. Possible trade-in value, right now as it sits, is $20,000 to $30,000. Unit 250, which is a tandem axle dump, we use that mostly for leaf and brush pickup, plowing. If we have excessive main brakes, that's our second truck we use. From February 2014 to February 2015, the labor costs in parts is $6,500. Lifetime is $41,243. The brush pickup, or the brush cap and the leaf pickup box, estimate of $10,500. It was new when it was, vehicle was purchased, and it's getting really worn out, especially during leaf pickup. The machine creates a lot of pressure, and every year I'm having Comer's welding, weld braces and brackets onto it. Fuel tanks rusty not really bad. The tandem rear axle, when you engage it, it's noisy, skips gears. Constant electrical problems due to conditions where plowing and salty, especially when we use chloride, that stuff is very corrosive. Possible trade-in, $20,000 to $35,000 as it sits.
So, just before we go on to the next ones, these two vehicles are the single axle dump truck that we requested and the tandem axle dump truck. I think it's shown on there, just wanted to make that clear.
And Mike, those were the two that were deferred from last year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I also did, forgot, failed to mention Alan, also, we use a software to collect data on our, our fleet maintenance. There's just a summary line item, so when he's talking about lifetime costs, at the top of each of these first two pages will be the summary of costs for the vehicles listed on that page. So, for instance, you see the parts, labor, outside repair, fuel, and the total costs for these two vehicles. On the second page, I did print these back-to-back, so be aware of that. On the second page then, are the rest of the requests, and again, their life-to-date costs are summarized up above. So, thank you, Alan.
And that cost includes fuel?
It does include fuel.
Okay. Because it's part of your.
It's a good difference to identify. Of course, we'd use fuel for whatever vehicle we had. We wanted to give you some idea of the parts and labor and outside contracting that's going into some of these. So, with that, Alan, thank you.
Page two, it has the smaller vehicles. I'll just go over it really quick. 232, which is our 2003 GMC 2500, it is 12 years old. Lifetime cost is $15,000. It's got a metal service box on it, it's rusted very badly. I've tried repairing it in the past, and just with the age of the vehicle, it's getting beyond repair. Underneath is heavily corroded with rust, fuel lines, brake lines, fuel tank. It's got also constant electrical problems, spending a lot of time on it. Our, Unit 263 is a 2006 Ford dump. It's 10 years old. Lifetime cost is $11,300 estimated. We use it for watering flowers, B-box repair, salting, pothole repair. It's got very high idle time due to the, what we use it for. The engine's getting kind of tired, it's got bad diesel smell coming out of the rear of the vehicle where the exhaust is, and that's where the guys, when they're usually pothole repairs and B-boxes, that's where they're usually standing in the back. Our 2007 Trailblazer, Building Services uses it. It's 10 years old, it's got 145,000 miles on it. Very high mileage, it's falling off. And again, a lot of these vehicles have heavy corrosion from sitting outside a lot. We're looking to replace that with a possible larger vehicle to put ladders, miscellaneous parts and tools in for the building's technician. Unit 405, which is a 2003 Explorer used in community development, lifetime cost is just over $15,000. And again, badly rusted, multiple leaks from the drivetrain, they're very expensive to replace. Heavy rust on the frame, brake lines, and fuel tank also. There's a, 803 is a 2010 Crown Vic. It's got low mileage for the age, but replacement is per the age of the vehicle. And also, 863, 2006 Trailblazer for replacement or to transfer to community development, because it's in fairly good condition.
Any questions on the summary sheet right now? Again, we can ask them at any time, but I just wanted to identify that on that second page, vehicle 405 is currently, one of the questions was what vehicles are in community development, or what do they have? 405 is the Explorer that's in community development. Mike Kupar was using that with Matt Fitzpatrick coming over. I think they've been sharing it. Rich can give us more details, but again, we have a vehicle issue in there, it's because Matt is too tall to fit into the Taurus. So, 863, our proposal would be to replace that vehicle, but transfer its use over to community development, so they'd have two larger vehicles. Or, as we said, take the backseat out, the front seat out of Taurus and let Matt sit in the back. But, I love it either, not much, I guess. So, with that, we'll go on then with, Alan has some information on new vehicle costs on our third page.
One question.
Yes.
I noticed that on page two, there's no trade-in values on any of these vehicles. Is it because there's no trade-in values to these vehicles, or?
Just we haven't compiled them yet.
Okay.
And we could try to put something together, but we have.
No, it was just, I noticed that it was on the, obviously, the first two were big vehicles with good trade-in values.
Okay, this is what would the replacement cost for the 2000, or Unit Number 241, the cabin chassis. There would be two estimates on one of the plow trucks. One would be the cabin chassis from International, which we're concentrating on now. This would be a 2016 International 7400, which is identical to the previous years. Just to let you know, the list factory price of this vehicle is $113,431, less the customer allowance, which is the municipality pricing, minus $43,869. So, what the Village of Montgomery would pay is $69,569, $61. And if you add at least $20,000 trade-in, that brings it down to $49,000. That's where we're trying to compare the trade-in value in the lifetime of the plow trucks. As you can see, if you go back to page one, what we've spent on it already compared to what a new cabin chassis would cost. And this would be under state bid on the price of this cabin chassis. The next page is 2015 GMC. List price is $38,425. I did talk to several GM dealers, and I did bring a quote to Kaufman's. I didn't tell them what price it was. I told them, "Can you give me your lowest price?" They came $3,000 under my Chevrolet, where we get the squad cars, for a price of $27,101, a savings of $11,344. 2013, I'm sorry, please turn a page. 2013 Tahoe squad car, listed out for $35,676. We paid, this would be state bid, $23,856, savings of $11,820. And these all, all the GM vehicles come with a five-year, 100,000-mile warranty. And on the next page, our 2012 Ford F-50, the last F-50 we purchased, list price is State bid for the Village of Montgomery is $39,983, savings of $11,027. Any questions on that?
On the Unit 241 replacement, when we talk about trading in the vehicle, is that just the truck, or is that the plow and the salt spreader?
That would be, that would be everything, one package.
You sell the whole thing, so when we, when we're comparing that to this $69,000, we have to add the equipment back in on the back end.
Right. The quote in front of you is for what we call a cabin chassis, which is the cab, obviously, in front of the truck, and then the chassis, the carriage that carries the dump body, if you have a dump body, or what we've been doing is just putting spreader boxes right on that chassis. So, as Alan said, there's two quotes, two components to the budget number. You'll see, I think the budget number for the single axle is 120,000 to 125,000. So, this portion of it is just for the cabin chassis. In this case, it's given to us by International Truck. And then, we've been using Benel Industries to fabricate and mount the additional equipment, so the salt spreaders, the calcium chloride tanks, lighting, there's a laundry list of items. So, that makes up the second half of it.
Okay.
And just on these quotes, Alan just got through the, the last one, that would be the single axle, or excuse me, the one-ton, you've heard us talk about a one-ton dump truck in Public Works. So, that would be that vehicle, the Ford F-50. The first two, I think, were pickup trucks. Alan, is that right?
One was the Tahoe squad car.
Or the Tahoe, and a pickup, right?
And the pickup truck, yes, which we purchased this year.
So. All right, we'll keep going then.
Okay. On the next page, it's a trade-in since I've been working for the Village of Montgomery from 2011 to 2015. There's a whole list of vehicles and equipment. Total trade-ins, $88,350. A lot of this equipment, where it says old equipment, it's been sitting in the back of the Public Works Department for a while, and we wanted to get the number down with Benel on his, on their half of the plow equipment for a 2012 plow truck. So, they came in and gave us prices for a lot of stuff that's been sitting unused for years. So, I thought that was a really good price. On the next page, just, I compared some vehicles, some used vehicles in the area. The first page was from Ron Westfall. It's a red pickup truck that matches all the rest of the service trucks in the Public Works Department. This vehicle has 76,000 miles. This is just a comparison of what I, what we pay for the Village of Montgomery and what vehicles are used out there. 76,000 miles on a 2012 vehicle, they were asking just under $24,000. And I put a note in there, again, states Village pays $27,101 for a 2015 GMC with a five-year, 100,000-mile warranty. Most used trucks have cloth seats and carpet that do not last very long in fleet conditions. And the next page is also a red pickup truck, 2011, this is from CarMax. It's got 10,000 miles on it, but it would only have basically one more year left on the warranty, and they're still asking almost $29,000. And again, used vehicle from Kaufman's, which is where we purchased our Unit 243, the 2015 GMC. They're still wanting almost $29,000 for a vehicle with 60,000 miles on it. And of course, it's not red, which I wouldn't know if we, you know, we wanted to keep red in the fleet. But still, for what we pay and the warranty, this would only have, again, one more year left on their warranty, bumper to bumper. And we still, you know, for a brand-new vehicle, with everything we want on it, we're still under what a used car is, that it's four years old. And on the last page, it's a Ford, 2013 Ford Explorer, which we are thinking about purchasing for replacement of Unit 405 for community development. The state bid for the four-wheel-drive Explorer with comparable options on it is $25,820. The Ford dealer that we deal with when we purchased the Ford Taurus squad cars last year, he threw in a five-year, 100,000-mile warranty for free for the Village to purchase the vehicles from him. It usually comes with a three-year, 36,000 miles from Ford. And this vehicle also from CarMax is only a two-wheel-drive. Four-wheel-drive Explorers are kind of hard to find. It is less money, but being a 2013, you would only have basically three years left on it, and it just wouldn't have the equipment. I tried finding one as close as I could, and this is the one that I found, but it still wouldn't match up pretty good. Any questions?
We had quite a bit of information tonight, and not to bombard or scatter it about, but we wanted to cover a few things here tonight. You know, first is, we get excellent municipal pricing. I mean, that's just, as you can see, on that single axle truck, almost $45,000 right off the top for municipal pricing. And we can get those vehicles, not just the big ones, but any of them, but the specifications that we want. Alan pointed out, some of the, you know, on some of the used cars, you frequently get cloth and carpet, which we quite honestly just don't want. They're, they're a maintenance hassle, they wear out quickly. We've had very good luck with trade-ins. We were talking, I think, at our last meeting about other options for getting rid of vehicles. We have used eBay in the past. Generally, we've had some assistance from an intern or other staff people to help us post photographs and answer inquiries and do those responses. We've had okay value, we think, on those. We have had a few wild goose chases where people will make bids and then not send the money, or make bids and then not come and pick them up. So, you basically, on a few of them, we've had to go through the process a couple of times. And again, if you take that and the time element into it, our feeling is that the trade-in option should be investigated first. We may find some where we just don't get much of a trade-in value. But again, we wanted to give you some idea, you know, there's about 10 or so trade-in values that we've made in the past. And I know you have nothing there to compare that to, but again, I think we're getting pretty good dollar for our trade-ins. So, I think it's an incentive for that dealer to get us to buy then their equipment, so. And then lastly, we want to talk about new versus used. And again, certainly, for printouts, you know, we tried to find some different sources, a couple of CarMax, I think, and Kaufman's was one, and there was another used car site. Certainly not an exhaustive set of data, but again, I think it demonstrates that the difference in pricing between a used car, at least for what it's listed for, doesn't mean you wouldn't get it down a little bit, but that compared, again, to the municipal pricing, in our opinion, just hasn't been enough to make up for the deficiencies where we're buying a car that's already got sometimes pretty high mileage, most of its warranty's been used up. And again, there's just a lot of unknown as far as maintenance and care on those. So, again, from our perspective, when you combine all those things, the excellent municipal pricing, we think high value we're getting on trade-ins, and the little or no benefit that going with a used vehicle provides, that, that going with new is quite honestly the best option for us. Again, it doesn't mean we can't explore other avenues, but little, I guess, wanted to give you a little background on how we've been approaching this problem. We think it's a very efficient use of Village funds. Again, the pricing, I think, demonstrates that. And quite honestly, when it comes to technical decisions, a lot of those all defer to Alan. I think he's done an excellent job, and you've seen the fleet, all of you have seen it. For one person to spec that out and maintain it, he's done a great job. So, with that, I'll open up the floor. Any questions, comments, anything?
I wanted to say thank you for, for doing this. I appreciate it, Alan, because I was the one who was questioning a lot of that, and I apologize to my fellow trustees for forcing the exercise, but I appreciate that, you know, my eyes are a little bit more open to the process of how this all works, so.
Good for us, you, from time to time, too, just to make sure we're on track still.
Yeah, so I appreciate the, the extra effort.
And I don't think you need to apologize for that at all. I think it sets, sends a good message to the residents that because, you know, we are working on refunding or funding our vehicle reserve going forward, that we will scrutinize the purchases every year during budget time. So, I think it was a good exercise for us to go through. Alan, I appreciate it. And you certainly demonstrated, in my opinion, a need for these specific vehicles that are in the budget, and also that you guys are looking at new versus used, you're looking at these types of things, and trying to do what's best for the taxpayers. So, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think you showed us a need for the 2003 and the 2006, and you had a good idea of how to replace them, at what price. Alan, I appreciate that. And also, at the same time, you're showing the 803 and the 863 being down, but still making a use of them, even though the mileage or whatever. I think, I think that's what Doug was trying to bring up in the beginning, is why get rid of all the cars? Like, if the, if the 803 is a low mileage, even though it's due for replacement, you maybe can use it somewhere else. And I think that's appreciated, that.
And I think that goes back to one of Doug's concerns, is that.
Yes.
You know, while the PD needs emergency vehicles to respond quickly, code enforcement doesn't necessarily need that dependability on a vehicle, and transferring that to community development when they're, you know, driving throughout town, I think is a great use for that and highlights what you were looking for.
We may have to adjust the hiring practices of people that are over 6'5", so we don't, to keep buying large vehicles for them, but, you know, Matt's a good guy, so.
I didn't realize they were in, some of them trucks were in that bad of a shape.
Yeah, well, 241, actually, this is the third year we've been trying to put it on the budget. So, and like I say, I try. So, and like I say, I try to keep them on the road as best as possible, but the big thing is, on the plow trucks, I'm also plowing, so when something breaks, you're pulling two guys off the route, and that could cause some complications.
Let me ask you a question. About all this stuff that's rusting, don't you guys steam underneath them? Because that salt is what's rusting them.
Yeah, I even have salt neutralizers. We've been using for three years on them, but while you're out, you know, salt, chloride is the biggest one.
Yeah.
That thing, it'll actually eat your hands up, but it's good for melting snow at low temperatures for the residents to get around, but it's very corrosive and horrible for wiring and frames. It actually, last year, we got rid of 251, and it actually had several holes in the frame.
Couldn't you, can't you steam them underneath of them?
Oh, that's what we do at the end of the season before we store them, and then we put what they call, like, Cosmoline. It's almost like a frame encapsulant. It tries to keep the rust down.
Can't they steam underneath of them at least once a week in the wintertime? You know, it would take a lot of that salt out of there.
Yeah, well, it depends. I mean, like, this morning, we, they were finished salting. They came in, and a half hour later, it started snowing again. So after they were just using that salt neutralizer, they were back out there. So it, time restraints and everything, we do as best we can.
I know that.
Yeah. So...
You got one that's rusting on the roof?
263, the old Ford, the 550. It's the old-style diesel. Yeah, it's rusting on the roof. I don't know how that happened. That happened before I started here, but...
Must have been had some salt on top of that roof for a long time.
Salt, or something, you know, fell on it or scratched. But she's old and tired. The problem is, it's got twenty-two thousand miles on it, but the thing is, the idle time, sitting there watering flowers and pothole patching, that's a lot of idling time, like also the squad cars. So you would say it's got twenty-two thousand miles, but it might have actually a hundred thousand miles on that engine from idling.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alan. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mike? Any other questions from the board, specifically on the vehicle requests that are in the budget this year?
I'd just like to add, I hear that you're one heck of a mechanic, so thank you.
You're welcome. I'm a little bit nervous, but other than that, I'm good.
You did fine.
Hey, did perfect. Thank you. Do you have anything else on the budget? All right, hearing no comments, this is the first reading. We will look, we'll have the second reading and passage...
Yes.
At our, the April 13th meeting. April 13th meeting, so if there are any, I guess I'll open it up to any other discussion items on the budget.
Just for clarification purposes, the vehicles that we just went through, what do we have in our budget right now? What's Public Works asking for?
The seven vehicles you saw are what was on the proposed list.
Are, did they make it through to the final cut?
They are. The only issue we have is, one of the items that's being held until we know what's going with the budget is the new transfer of funds into the Vehicle Reserve Fund from the General Fund. If we don't make that transfer, if that ends up getting pulled to make up the difference, then there won't be enough money already sitting in the Vehicle Reserve Fund to make all of those purchases. So some of the vehicles will get deferred, just because there won't be enough funding. I did ask Mike and Alan to go through and kind of prioritize the vehicles, and they went through and rated them high, medium, or low. There were four they rated as high priority. So we would start there and see what we could do, but the seven are currently in there.
Okay, thank you. And I know during the last meeting, I was pretty direct on the buildings, and I understand the need for the buildings. I understand that they will, will have a longer service life of the vehicles and stuff that they're protecting. But I, one of my issues, and I think Trustee Bond as well, was we were always trying to find funding for this tree, these trees. We've run into this problem through no fault of our own. That's one of the things that I hear about a lot, and I think some of the other trustees hear about it as well. I like to find the money to fully fund our tree program, because that, if you have a, if they've cut a tree down in front of your house, and we're seeing potentially that if, even if we have a cost-sharing program and we're not, we cut potentially trees from our budget, it doesn't matter if I've paid my one hundred and fifty dollars for my tree, I can't get it planted. And that's something that the residents, at least as I believe, that they see a direct impact, and they want to see something, if their tree is cut down, they want to see it replaced within ten years.
If someone donates money to purchase a tree, our staff will plant it, so there's no additional expenditure. I mean, obviously, we have costs for our own staff, but we've already incurred those. So just to make that clarification, and we can still do that because participation hasn't been so high that we're overwhelmed, but just, I just wanted to clarify that. If someone donates the money for the tree, it will get planted.
So historically, historically, everybody that has paid or purchased as a part of that has received a tree that year.
I would say so. I'd want to check with Ed to see if there was some late-season requests.
At least that's our, that's the policy, is to, their funding is going in.
If they funded, it's a timely fashion it gets put in.
In the sense that we do our planting in the spring and in the fall, if somebody, you know, participates on August 1st, timely means it'll be done in the fall. If they come in on December 1st, timely means the following spring.
Yes. Okay, that's...
But if we have a surplus from these buildings, which I'm hearing that we would, I'd like to use some of those funds to fully fund the tree replacement program for the year.
Right now, we've moved that money into the General Fund, and it'll be sitting there. And then when we see what happens with the, with the governor's overall budget, then, yeah, the board will have the say on what you want to do with the, with whatever money is left there.
Because the trees were removed from this budget.
They're, they were on the list of possible things. Nothing's been removed.
Okay, so, yeah, they're not removed. They're in the budget as it sits right now.
They're in the budget, but it's not, it's not fully funded in there.
They're in the budget, not at the fully funded amount, yeah.
When and if these budget cuts come, then we'll have a discussion.
Then there'll be some decisions to make, the board will have to make at that point.
If I could add just one item to keep in the back of your mind as you're considering all this, and I know it's not an easy question, the larger, be it the two plow trucks on the first page, for us to use those this coming winter, they'd have to be, they're going to have to be ordered probably by April, early April. That may not be possible. I know there's lots of decisions happening elsewhere and information that we may not get that early, but, so, if we decide to defer, just please note that those two trucks, if we order them later this year, it's unlikely that we would have them until the following year, so...
If that was the case, if that is the case, which I would put those, and I completely agree with the trees, and I'm behind the trees also, but if that's the case, that we have to, because the reality is, we may not know exactly what's going to happen with our budget until June, July, and so we won't be able to make those changes until then. For me, those types of purchases are top priority in this budget, and some of the other items may fall to the side. But if we miss that window, and we're not going to have it for this winter, let's just punt and wait and buy that at the end of the cycle, so that way we can, you know, balance things out that way. But I completely agree with the concern about the trees. If it pleases the board, I'd like to, we left it with the one hundred and eighty thousand dollar surplus, we'll sit tight, you know, vote on the budget at the next meeting, and see what happens in June, July, and then have a talk about some of those items that have been frozen.
I agree.
Can I ask a question related to that decision? These lifetime costs, Alan, with these, these are exponentially becoming more expensive to repair, as well as we're losing two plow operators every time a vehicle breaks.
I'm guessing these are on the high priority list? Okay. Any other budget comments? All right, hearing none. The budget that you see now is the budget that you will see on April 13th, and we'll move forward. Moving on to Item B, is Resolution 2015-003, approving the supplemental resolution for 2014 street maintenance program and salt purchase. And with that, I'll ask Director Povens for a summary on the item.
Certainly, thank you, President Pride. In your pack tonight is Resolution 2015-003 to approve a supplemental resolution. As you may recall, there was some uncertainty as to whether the State of Illinois would allow us to use motor fuel tax funds to purchase salt. This is a result of our challenges with the Central Management Services bid and being excluded from that, and having to purchase from another vendor. After working with the local roads folks in Shumber, and giving them justification, it's why we thought it should be included, they agree that it is an allowable use for MFT funds, which is good for us, rather than having to come out of General Funds, which we just discussed, are pretty stretched already. So earlier in the year, we had presented a resolution to you, which you had passed, that outlined our anticipated MFT expenditures for the year. This supplemental resolution is just adding to it the difference between what you had passed previously and what we now anticipate our full cost to be with the salt purchases. We did, our budget last year was based on a lower per-ton price. This adjusts for the actual tonnage price we're paying and for the quantity that we've used. So the resolution, if approved, is you telling the State of Illinois that, yes, you are okay with us using our allotted MFT funds to purchase an additional ninety-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars for road salt. This is for the salt we've just purchased for the past year. If approved, we'll send this I dot, and that, again, just is, their local roads people manage the MFT program and the funding for us, so that will just give them what they need to put this in the approved column, so when we put in the request for that money, we'll be able to get it.
This is more of a housekeeping item, really, at this point, isn't it? Okay.
As the elected body, it's up to you to say, yes, we want to use it, not staff, so they require a resolution, a vote.
Who wants to say yes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Third.
Motion by Trustee Marisack, second by...
Trustee Bond.
Trustee Bond. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
Carrie 6-0, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last item for separate action this evening is intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Sugar Grove, the Village of Montgomery, and the Village of Hinckley for due-process hearings on impoundment of vehicles. With that, I'll ask our attorney, Steve Anderson, to summarize.
Thank you. You have, in the past, passed an impoundment ordinance, which I would characterize as a bad-guy ordinance. In other words, in those cases where someone is stopped for a significant crime, in other words, not traffic tickets or other things like that, but a more significant crime, and there are a variety of types, that will trigger a towing of their vehicle. Along with the towing, it will result in a fine, or an administrative fee, rather, of five hundred dollars, and also the costs and expenses of the tow, which are set by the tow company. However, in order to lawfully do that, there also has to be a process for appeal of that, and that is done through an impoundment ordinance, and you have to have hearings, a hearing officer, a prosecutor, all nine yards, if somebody chooses to appeal that. That doesn't happen very often, I'll be very honest with you, which is a good thing, but on those rare occasions where it does happen, we have to have a process for that. What we had suggested, and what the staff had readily agreed to, was the suggestion of going in with other municipalities that also do this, and there are two right now that are here locally, and that's Sugar Grove, that we wrote their ordinance as well, and they've been doing it for probably more than a year now, maybe two years, and they have been bearing the expense a hundred percent for their costs. By going in with them, it will be saving you money, because you'll be splitting it with them, so they will save money and you will save money, so that is a good thing. And then the Village of Hinckley also elected to get in on that process as well. Hinckley's volume will be very, very small because of the size of the community, it'll be very infrequent, so they will contribute on a per-hearing basis only, but that will also serve to offset your costs. So this IGA, in effect, puts what I just described into place, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, but it's basically a fee-splitting device.
And where do we do these, do we do these currently?
You do not have this system set up yet, so if you chose not to do this, we would have to establish the system here.
Okay. And we'd be doing this at the Village of Sugar Grove?
Yes, that is the central location between the three.
Yep. Seems like great cost savings for us going forward.
And there's only a cost if, in fact, there's a hearing, correct?
Yes, in effect, yeah.
But to clarify, so we don't have this process currently?
Correct.
We've never had anybody appeal?
No, we used to have a different system, and the state law changed and required this process, so we're adapting to state laws' changes.
Okay.
Is this, first of all, this is an excellent idea of governments working together for the benefit of the taxpayer, but is this an idea that we might want to trigger some letters to neighboring communities, saying, would you like to be part of this also?
I see no downside to that.
Now, my question is, if we haven't had many appeals, so when there is an appeal made, Trustee Youngerman gets his car impounded in Sugar Grove, and that's the only appeal that's heard, we're paying for half of theirs.
You're going to split the overhead cost, which is the cost of the hearing officer and the prosecutor, but again, you have to think about it in terms of how many get appealed versus how many don't. Remember, for all, let's say it's 10%, so, and that probably wouldn't be outside the realm of possibility as far as a percentage. So if you, if you do 10, that means you've made five hundred dollars, not made, but you, you know, there are administrative fees of five hundred dollars times 10, or five thousand dollars, of which one gets, you know, appealed, so that's a five hundred dollar potential refund, and even that's not a guarantee. You'll be splitting that cost, so overall, you'll be making, I don't like to use the word making when we talk about government, but you will be saving significant dollars.
Okay.
And just for clarification purpose, Trustee Youngerman would be more worried about the wrath of his wife than the impound fee.
The record will reflect that. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to accept? So moved.
Second by Trustee Bond, second by Trustee Youngerman. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yep.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes. That carries 6-0. Thank you. We don't have any items for discussion this evening. Do we have any newer unfinished business? Is it an overall summary of everything?
No, I was just going to say, the newer unfinished business, Wisconsin beat Oregon, right? I'd be interested to see.
Now, what's Denny going to say?
Somebody put my...
I don't have anything to say now.
I wanted to say that for you, Denny.
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. Anything else? Kind of expected more.
Well, wait, no.
I was going to say, go ahead with your second page. Future meetings, Plank Commission meeting of April 2nd, and then our Village Board meeting on April 13th at 7:00 PM, and the rest of the meetings there. With that, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation, which is filed and pending pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 over 2C11.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Youngerman?
Second.
Second by Trustee Marisack. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yay.
Thank you. Put the meeting back to order and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Hines, second by Trustee Youngerman. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Hines? Trustee Youngerman? Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?